Okay, we're recording. We're gonna open a footboard meeting for December 4th, which I was preparing for. Do you have adjustments to the agenda? The only thing I have is I got a laying email from Robert Williams, the project manager for the School Street Bridge, and he has a question about urban soil in the area. He can just put that back. He's looking for a place to dump some of the soils from the bridge when they construct it, and he can only dump it in a certain area.
Is it contaminated?
Is he looking to see if we have an website to eat news?
He has, yeah, he has a map of where this urban soil background area boundaries. So what he's trying to do is he's hoping that we can find a place you can dump 2,000 cubic feet, I believe, of soil, so that when he puts it out to bid, they don't have to haul it far away and cost them more. So it says, as you may know, the bridge project is located within an urban soil background area, as defined by A and R. Since the bridge project is located within this area, soils excavated during construction, constructed them need either to be reused on site where possible. We expect the opportunity for reuse on site will be limited due to the phase of the project. Disposed of within an urban soil background area or tested to potentially dispose of outside of the urban soil background area. In accordance with the DBC rules. Anyway, he's looking for, it could be upwards of 2,000 cubic yards. His concern is contractors may increase bid prices to haul waste soils to another area in another town. I wanted to check to see if there's any potential waste area within the in this map to dump it, and I said I would ask.
What about the four holes each year?
Well, I'll pass this around, and you can look at it and think about it, and we'll bring it up under select board stuff. I didn't know if there was room up in back in the sand pit.
Just wonder about it. I don't know about the legalities about dumping that stuff anywhere. Might need to go to a permitted site.
Why do you even know these things? He knows them. I mean, if we, if we do it in that area, we can do it in this area on this map.
Okay.
Otherwise, it needs to be tested
Yeah.
or haul to another one of these areas wherever you are.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
And I didn't know if there was room up in back of the sand pit. Way up by Mr. Westovers.
Maybe.
I don't know how much 1,000 cubic feet is it testing?
Not much room up here.
No, but 100 wouldn't take that much out of that.
Yeah.
Cemetery?
Oh, my words.
Yeah, it's big. I don't have time to see it.
That's and that wouldn't take very far.
Anyway, if you think about it, and we'll bring it back, it's a much larger review. I'll pick a motion to accept in the minutes of November 20.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Do you have any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so carry. Comments from the community?
So, as you all know, our town cat went to the vet, and it cost a little over $700. So I've had, I put it on our porch forms about what happened and everything. So I've had people come forward from the community that would like to donate, but because it's the town cat, you guys of the town, I have to ask you if they can donate. If we are willing to accept donations from people to help with the cat.
Cat on VRI?
Well, yeah, he's doing much better. He's still got a BB in him and a pellet, but yeah.
Really? Who the hell did that?
Well, they were pretty sure he ate a dead bird that had been killed by a BB, and that he got shot in the rear end with a pellet.
The cat was shot with a pellet? That's some of them.
But he swiped, and they have come to the conclusion, they sent me a text, that the surgeon they talked to doesn't think they need to be removed, so.
But he originally went in there because he had a parasite.
Parasite. Because he'd been throwing up for four days straight, and we were very concerned. He lost three pounds since April. So, but I did find out he's younger than I thought. I thought he was 11, but he's only nine. So that's the good news.
All right. I'll make a motion whatever you need on that. We'll take care of our coworker.
Yeah.
People can donate bought.
So, in favor of allowing people to donate towards his jacks, man, hotels? If they up, say aye. Close, so carry.
Thank you.
And how much has been raised so far?
None, because they're waiting to donate, but I told them I had to ask.
Any chance you can find a home shodding?
I'm sure we have an inkling.
I'd like to know that myself.
Richard, you're gonna donate to the private investigator fund?
Yeah, that's gonna work good.
Okay, we have some correspondence which Michelle's gonna share with us. That's actually a presentation I'll do later. It's not really corresponding. Do I have other correspondence?
Pasha, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? I couldn't hear a response.
Yes.
Oh, great. Sorry, and sorry I'm not there. And I'm so sorry to hear about Jax. That's like, I had no idea. So, thank you so much for having me here today. I've just been, as you know, we do a lot of work with the community, and I've been spending some time going around to communities, really as a customer service call. We work so closely with the staff and with the board and the planning commission, and it's just nice to get some feedback on some of the projects and just make sure that we're covering all of our bases. And then I'd also like to talk about some of the new legislation that passed the Vermont State House, and how it might affect some of our work with you going forward, and some of the things that we're gonna need to do in the next two years. So yeah, so first, any feedback from anybody? And I'm sorry, I can't see super well, as you're a little far away.
Well, we really appreciate all the help you give us as a small rural community. We couldn't do it without your guidance.
Well, and I have to say that, oh, look at the zoom in. That's much more. It's nice to see everybody. Thank you for that. That's so good technology. And it's wonderful to have Linda as a board member, because that's very helpful to us in understanding kind of the needs and the direction of the community as well. So, and I know you know very many of our staff. I'm not sure if everyone has also met Mark and Conrad, our two new assistant planners.
We got one of the interns, Conrad.
Conrad.
Conrad. Oh, yes. So they both started as interns, and they've both been hired as full-time staff, which we're really excited about. So you will probably see more of them in the coming year, and especially in the summer, when they're gonna be doing a lot of fieldwork. So, the legislature was very busy last year and the year before, and they have, they passed Act 181, which changes what we need to do for our regional plan, and some of the things we need to incorporate, and some of the things we need to work with communities on. The first thing was actually included in the Home Act the previous year, but the state will be, because of the housing challenges, they've conducted a housing needs assessment, and they are going to be establishing housing development targets for each region. And then we are going to be asked to work with the communities to establish housing targets for each community. And then each community is going to need to incorporate those housing targets into the town plan in the future. These are targets, and we do anticipate working with all the communities to allocate those targets fairly inequitably about across all communities. And we will be working with you on this in the coming year. If folks have questions about that, it's kind of a change from some of the stuff we've done in the past.
No questions? Lori's working with the planning commission on those now?
Uh, no, she's not working with the planning commission on those now, because we haven't received the targets yet. We'll start to be working on those in the new year. So we'll make sure to keep you posted. And they're also passed legislation that requires us to do some significant updates to our regional plan. And one of the things that we have to update is the land use map. And as you know, we work with, we'll cut to understand what you have in your, the map associated with your town plan, and incorporate it into our land use map. But some of the definitions that we're using for land use are changing, and so we might need to change our map in the future. And we're very much hoping that the future definitions accord with the definitions we've used in the past, and the goals and aspirations of what you want to achieve as well. So it may be a situation where the categories we end up using may or may not be fully where we want to be, but we're very hopeful that we can work with you to make sure that everything lines up with our regional plan and the town plan. Because we're in a situation now where we have to take our regional plan to the Land Use Review Board and get it approved. It used to be that our plan was just reviewed, approved by a board and then moved forward. So we are under a little more state review, I guess.
That's an example of what sort of changes or what's on this land use map, just if we're gonna
Sure. Well, as you know, we have categories now for village centers. Those are fairly consistent communities. We have on our map a general category for rural or working lands. And now rural has been broken up into several different categories, including ag and working lands and conservation and rural general.
Does that work closely with, does that work closely with our zoning bylaws, or is that different? Or do the zoning bylaws need to?
Yeah, it should be consistent with the zoning bylaws. It's really just about how the legislation defines the categories. So for instance, you might have working lands that are also in a forest block, and we will work to keep those as working lands, but one of the definitions of conservation is for some of these forest blocks. So we'll need to sit down with you in the coming year and just go through these things, because we fully, it's our goal to make our map look like what the towns wish to have on the map.
But that gives me a better understanding.
Yes, and there's just a lot of work to do over the next year. So we're gonna, Seth and I are gonna be doing visits with all the select boards and planning commissions throughout the year to talk about these things. And we're also just required to do really extensive outreach for our regional plan. So you'll see a lot of activity, not just visiting with the select boards and the planning commissions, but a lot of public outreach as well, surveys, and things like posts on Front Porch Forum, et cetera. So anything else? I kind of feel bad. I was hoping to gauge a little bit of conversation. And we're just very happy to work with you all.
Everybody's thinking about numbers tonight. It's big budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, let me guess, that's happening all around the county.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I know, I saw a lot of folders going around. I hope it's not an overwhelming or challenging process this year. Or maybe it is every year.
It is to keep it down.
Uh huh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I look forward to visiting you in person early in the new year, and I guess I'm happy to answer the questions, or just wish you well with your budgeting process.
I just would like to say, this is Michelle, I'm the Select Board Admin Assistant, and I've just been working very closely with Tori and Alan and Conrad, and they are amazing. I never expected to have that level of assistance ever. And having worked at a state level in states that actually have county government, it's, this is to me better than the equivalent of county government help, so I just am very grateful.
That's so great. And you know, I'll be very happy to share your comments with the staff, because I'm just so appreciative of how hard they work to serve the communities. And Tori does a wonderful job of finding money too, which is just terrific.
Great.
Yeah, so thank you for those comments. I appreciate it. And if I'm done, I'd like to turn off my video, but I'd like to listen in. It's always just helpful to me to understand kind of what's going on with the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for
Yeah, thanks.
And we're gonna move on to our budget areas. For the highway, I'll first.
Okay, so pretty, for the most part, everything's then the same or close to the same. There's two major changes, big increases. The first one being insurance, which is unavoidable.
It's out of our there's 20% from the Nebraska shooting, and then starting, you know, employees, it's just it's unavoidable cost that, you know, this budget has to absorb.
The second biggest one is a paving. So we budgeted 35,000 last year. This coming year, I'd like to plan to have town help redone. If we reclaim it and repave it, I guess it will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 80,000, 80 to 100. The alternative to that is to just overlay it, which is an option, but it's not as long term. So we'll revisit that topic again in a couple of years.
Is that all the way from the bottom or from a circle point?
No, this is the top, like 1,300 feet. Is that what was destroyed as part of the front? We patched it all in? No.
Pretty much on the top, it's like not even there.
Yeah, pretty much. Be better off there. So the 80, ideally, we would reclaim that, regrade that, ditch it, change the coberts while it's down there, repay the two inches, or two or two and a half inches base and an inch and a half of top. And it would last quite some time.
And 80 covers all of that?
That's a guess. That's my guess.
100 maybe?
Yeah, 80 to 100.
Does that cover as coberts and ditching things? That's not for 80s, just?
80 is just the chewing it out, grade and every pavement.
And somewhere in this budget, you have all the money for coberts and everything else?
I think so.
We were wondering if maybe we could use the capital fund dollars for this particular project.
Or we can see where we land with our budget at the end of this fiscal year. We've got some left over, and we can reclaim it, do that, right? We can, we can overlay it.
Oh, we're just throwing money away, but just overlaying. It's time, to me, in my mind, it's time to let's start doing it where it lasts.
I agree.
We also have the equipment lease and inventory schedule before the replacement, equipment replacement fund, which we upped 5,000.
Do you have that in our package?
Yeah, we just actually did.
And has it been updated?
Yes, I just updated it today.
And so I'm a little bit serious. Where did you update it?
I updated the Western Star, the Joey, it's the yellow bar. And that's $40,464 annually for seven years.
So that's the new one you ordered?
Yeah, actually, I made a period of rest. That is because that's without a trade-in. That's what we would pay without a trade-in. It needs to go across two more bars, I'm stable. If we decided to keep it or to sell it ourselves, if we decided to trade it in, Dylan, they're only gonna give us 25,000-ish. And that truck with all the attachments seems to be worth far more than that. So we could either keep it as a backup, or, you know, we buy it for a dollar essentially, if it is a backup, or we try to sell it ourselves.
We don't have to buy it for $1,000. And we, oh, yeah. Oh, no. So I was actually looking at that. And we bought the excavator in January 2020. How come we didn't start paying until '22? Is that right?
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think this, I don't think this Well, I'm just saying.
The end of it's right, that in 2027, it's the end of the term. That's right.
Yes, yeah, you bought it in 2020, because I heard it's the one initiating that it says 2020 here. Yeah, it just doesn't go back that far.
I think Lucian did.
I see a mirror. Oh, anyway. Anyway, all I want to say is, I'd like to check this out again before we have a final amount, so that we make sure we put the right amount in the highway budget, because I have some questions.
All right, and again, under the equipment spend, it's 152.3, but in the Equipment Replacement Fund line up is 120. Are you anticipating selling the truck, you putting that in?
We already have at the moment, right now, we have 74,000 in there still.
So we just need $120,000 in future.
Yeah, I started to do this thing, which needs to be updated. It shows you every year what your ending balance and account is, and then how much you need, and it needs to be corrected so that we actually know what we need each year.
Can you just give me what, like, we can sit down and show me if you have it with that? Because we'll be having five pieces of equipment on the lease or on a month when we get to new truck.
Right. Any change in companies, do you have any?
Yeah, I will check to see if we have a signed contract with you first. I couldn't, couldn't find one in the file. Can't find the new one, that is the 17. I don't know if Perd has one, or I left a message. They're gonna try to, I'll try to get one tomorrow. I know I haven't signed one since I came back. And that 5,000 is still a little high until the man meets with the road crew and really figures out what they need around. So I think it's gonna be much less than that, but and we're working on using that company too for the map, so when it comes to that budget, we're hoping to save some money there, at least 20, 30%. Fires went up because we did get a bid. We got a fact quote in, and they're gonna cost more than it has at today, 7,600, so.
What is the increase?
Increase is up to, if all of these numbers are correct, we increased 1,000. Yeah, but that's because of insurance and the painting. Those are the major ones. And the negotiation talks have not been settled, but I put in what I, what I thought that they would be resolved up, so that number could change as well. The highlighted yellow portions are the ones where it's sustaining or really increased the budget. Brush cutting went up from 2,000 to 6,000 because we needed to rent. We figured we rent the brush cutter that mounts, that they can go in and do a really solid brush cutting. It's faster.
So I'd like to explain that in a little more detail. So we have that attachment that goes on our excavator, and it works really good. They're cutting everything back and replating the road that's grown in there with that. But it's slow. So my grand vision is that someday we will have all these roads cut back, where the right way totally cut back all the way. And we can rent this machine that goes on the tractor that's used, stay uses them to just maintain that stuff when it's an inch or two inches in size, and not have to go back and do a heavy cutting every 10, 15 years.
That's a outside noise. We do a lot more for the road.
Yeah, but geared more towards brush, not the, yeah.
And another question for Dylan, I'm sure.
There are, there's another. Portion that that we'd like to present, which means I can engage if you packet. But I don't have to do it in part two. It does, but it has to be the select board budget. Uh and what we discussed last time. Yeah.
You bet.
Okay.
A little closer.
Okay, so yeah, we had met and and um I proposed with the select board budget with the the um. Budget that we have in select board for my position right now, there's gonna be another, if I'm not taking health insurance. There's like a twenty thousand dollar, pretty much variation from this year to next year. So this year, we're gonna have about eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars left over. And uh what we'd like to propose for this year. Moving forward is to to not lose that money, keep it, keep it in our budget um. And you talked about doing a road consultant, but. The it makes most sense after really digging into into um. Some issues, I think to to hire a snowflower as a seasonal part-time. Uh this person would work like nineteen weeks from the center first until April, uh April first. Uh but this person would be a CBL licensed, part-time driver. To plow these parking lots and Jones Road, but then. Uh any additional roads that the crew ends up needing help with. They would use the one ton, but then um they would also be on fault free weekends a month, so that everybody could get at least one week off guaranteed that they can plan a month. And so we did some math and if we hired this position for twenty hours. Per week at two to twenty-five an hour, it would be ninety-five hundred dollars for the nineteen weeks. Plus um. Then the overtime on the weekends that we will be saving because our was paying for that overtime on the weekend. The overtime, I think it had an average of the three overtime rates and came up to forty-six fifteen, forty-six dollars and fifteen cents and had all of our average overtime rate. Um that more than pays, you know, so if we put someone on. For uh twenty-five dollars an hour, that person's just gonna end up costing. Uh savings of, we're gonna have a savings of two hundred and dollars and fifteen cents an hour, so that position is all.
Only on the weekends?
Yes, yeah, and it would be on fault. So you have to budget for, I think I budgeted for sixteen weekends um. But on fault, three weekends a month. So these total costs would come up, but would be. I think I said, even if we increase. If we increase it to twenty-five dot, twenty-five hours a week, I think we stand a better chance of getting someone to build us these help institutions with a CBL. Um that total would be thirteen thousand. For that period of time, so I'm trying to see what's the word. Uh this does free up Dylan's winter time to then start to uh address the office and admin duties, he doesn't have, doesn't have time for. Breath in ear and then to develop and maintain the data that will be for. Uh so help to start planning for the summer work, which means the grant work. Because we did talk with the the road crew about doing a. As much of the grant work as we can in-house. So that we're not paying out where we are um getting that work done cheaper, much cheaper. And getting paid for it. Um and then he would keep working alongside Lucian to learn Lucian's responsibilities. Uh while Lucian's still here until June thirty and then Lucian said he'll, you know, he's always there for consultation.
And our budget can absorb thirteen thousand for this year.
On the uh select board budget.
Select board, the select board budget can absorb.
Yes, because we're still, we're only gonna be coming in. This year at thirty-nine of that sixty, thirty and forty each.
Not long, you know, that soon, so you have to. You know, make sure that you don't steal every penny right away because.
Well, we're almost halfway through the year.
So if the select work position can absorb it this year. Moving forward with that. Call it thirteen thousand, the line item for temp labor for next year would go from two to thirteen, we continue to hire for this. Next year?
Works out.
Well, at eight eighty-eight, we can anticipate in the moderate. Twelve thousand. Or nine thousand.
Lower your select board budget.
Yeah.
I'm assuming. If you look at the back page of that, you see a a little graph. That uh Dylan drafted and it just kind of shows the org chart there. This is the winter scenario, those are the org charts. Um including this fourth part of my seasonal at twenty to thirty hours per week. And uh Dylan just said that um he spent half of his time on hand looking at the road crew and then half was in the office, we could do a lot of planning. We would sit in here so that it would be, you know, that we could work closely on to this. Um the the worksheets and things like that and getting caught up with all of our databases.
You can have a list of what those deliverables, deliverables could be, I mean, what? What exactly would we expect to see? In the spring as far as the data is concerned, we're gonna have vehicle maintenance records, we're gonna have culvert inventories, we're gonna have.
So yeah, the whole sheet on culverts, uh road surfacing, brush cutting and um. Resurfacing, right?
Ditching, yeah, resurfacing. Brush cutting, culverts, those are like the four main things.
And we've got to go back and redo our culverts so that those are up to date in this, in the state database and then as well as the um MHS or MR, you know, so whatever.
G P.
Yeah, R G B uh segments.
And I like it, I just, I would wanna have. I would wanna have the deliverable written somewhere so that we know what you're building this. Yeah, and you know, one of the stipulations that I would wanna see is that when snow leaves in April, May. It means that you have got a list of what we're doing next summer. And again, deliverables, we would be able to say, starting in May, we're doing this and it will be done by June. That kind of thing, you know what I mean? So we would have a schedule to count on for the summer work, barring catastrophe, which always happens, but right? It's one thing to say twenty hours a week on paperwork, but I just, I really think we as a board would love to see what that's gonna buy us. Specifically. But with that.
Well, we're in a hope. What what? What my, what my hope is, is that this this. Hybrid position is what I. Call it in my head. That I'll, I'll, I will be working like the way that I always have. Guys in the road crew. And then the other, the other half of the time. Specifically designated to me, planning things, generating. These concrete building blocks that I think everyone has dreamed of for a very long time. And uh make a bed.
And and the only person that can do the admin work is somebody in your position.
That's right.
And when you walked in here five years ago, you were handed nothing with the previous administration.
It'd be nice to avoid that in the future.
Because people don't hold jobs. The Department of Labor has a statistic that says most people are in and out of a job every five or six years.
Yeah.
Uh if you decide that you're gonna go pet cows for a living. We, I want us to have the paperwork that says this is the procedure. We can hire any random stranger off the street and we'll know where the roads stand, we'll know what the trucks have seen.
Agreed. That's the goal.
So how do you feel that you, that your rest of your road crew with um. Their capabilities to carry on a project without you?
I will still be there.
But where are you? Yeah, for for forty hours?
No, I'll, I'll be there, I'll be working closely with them still. And telling, you know, I'll go and make sure that everything's going the way that it's supposed to.
You can check on.
I would check on them and I'll work with them.
This is a good time to also test out, like, building these, these schedules and priorities, take the time in which to start testing that out.
And we have a a tem- temporary help. That can run drop, but for me up to do some of that stuff.
In the winter?
Yeah.
For the summer? No, this is just the winter.
But if you can set the plan straight in the winter, you shouldn't need to help in summer.
No.
No.
You get, you get every, all your ducks lined up. Now.
I think we'll save a lot too by doing that in now.
Well, yeah, it's the same time, you don't have to pay a larger proportion of the grant.
And I wonder if the quality might go up, not that there's huge quality issues anyway, but with you being freed up. Ten, fifteen, twenty hours a week to follow around and and check things. You might be able to hold some heat to the fire when it comes to sloppy workmanship or. Just hanging around.
Yeah, I think things go a lot smoother.
So you have someone in mind?
Yeah, Mike Reno.
As a CBL, all you could do with temp car or seasonal part-time.
Ask his background, is he like, um has he been on road crew before?
Yeah, I've never heard of him, I've heard of him more.
Okay.
Recommendations from there? People like him?
Yeah, I, yeah, I would say so. You could call Mark French and ask him.
Oh. And his, his real life job is he runs a tree service, right?
Right.
So all your winter time brush cutting needs. And you could find several hours a week just there.
Okay.
We also discussed about truck usage, so that he would be driving one truck and Dylan and Joey would go back and talk to the trucks so that he would always be driving.
He'll be doing the same thing.
On the same truck.
Same route?
Yeah, same route, same truck all the time.
To get it all down in a computer, so at the end of the day, he can spend fifteen, twenty minutes. I put this thing in and it will be recorded. Over it is. That's one of my goals.
We've got this spreadsheet nearly done, so we have to make sure that once we. Know that we've hit all of the bullets that match society and per road, that will be especially per value.
Structure and clarity is. What I'm looking at.
The ability to survive in your home. And the department could have you leave or any of the other crew leave. And the town could survive without scrambling and without losing all that information walks around on the top of you guys' shoulders. We would have that, right, be able to. To pass that on to any random stranger that walks through the door.
I think by that point, Dylan and I talked about that point this summer. We'll be in a much better position to assist one another with organization and and addition of priorit- prioritization.
Yeah, I I keep coming back to deliverables, I wanna be able to see what we're gonna have. Uh so to be more specific. So one of the things I've been crying about is I wanna know what maintenance has been done to the trucks. You guys have have been coding your part purchases, but truck maintenance is more than parts. You know, if you spend four hours chasing a wire and you put a thirty cent wire connector on it, the thirty cents means nothing to me, but the four hours that you've chased it means a lot.
Yeah.
Uh so one of the things I would wanna see is I would wanna see a vehicle maintenance. Spreadsheet database, mapping with a picture on it, I don't care what it is. But each truck, each piece of equipment should have that.
Sure.
Uh same thing in the road database, you know, I wanna be, see. These things are being built, you know, this, these records are being built, it driveway culverts. You know, you replaced one on Elmore Pond Road, it was this, it is this, now this is the date we did it. We held it to these highway standards, whatever other information you gotta have. But so that in the future, if we get a call about a culvert, if we get a call about anything. It's, it's not buried in a record somewhere, we can click three buttons and there it is. Those are the kinds of records that I wanna see, and the only reason I keep saying I want to know what you're gonna give us is so that. We can track your progress towards those goals. You know, mid-winter, you should be halfway through building what you think you're gonna build. I just wanna make sure that we're on track to get what we're, what we're asking for, or what I'm asking for. I don't know if the rest of the board thinks I'm out to lunch demanding all this information, but.
More information is better for making decisions.
To make clear, Dylan and I discussed that we can go back and do memory for culverts, but we're, we're gonna have a clean slate for, for red tape. Um because culverts, I think, are. A a clear thing that Dylan can replace and will be very valuable to go back and enter that, as well as the um. The hydrologically connected segments, so we'll get those up to date from them, uh but everything else is moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, that makes perfect sense.
And maybe the maintenance will try to see what we've done, but I don't know that that's.
Yeah, it's, it's more about moving forward, I mean, your, our chance truck is new enough where you probably can recall the big ticket items if there have been any. And Joey's truck is becoming new, yours will be new soon enough. By the time yours rolls in, I would like to, this would be second nature.
Yeah.
You know, any kind of data entry that has to be done will just happen.
And then any sets, costs associated with these projects, like with these roads. Um I can enter once we get the invoices coming and Dylan quotes them and I'll enter them.
And I think that would help us budget rather than, you know, guessing what we need in class three, we'd be able to say, well, we wanna do this many miles, this is what it costs. It's just, I think it'll boost accuracy everywhere. To have this.
Better do.
You up for it?
I'm up for it, I'm the only one that's gonna be able to do it, nobody else knows all the specific details.
Let's get that again before you have a struggle.
It's called jobs and care.
Good thing. Get all the disaster.
Give away all my levers, Linda.
Right, so what are you asking us to?
To give us the ability to hire for this position, using spots on this again, that will come up.
Could you tell us how much it's going?
Um I'd like to be able to offer twenty-five hours a week, just in case, because he didn't seem too interested in ten to twenty hours a week. I'm, I have him mail out to him, but I'd like to be able to offer at up to twenty-five hours a week plus than that, those rotating events that are gonna be really roughly like five hours an hour.
So the total sum is that thirteen one fifty-five that?
That's hot estimated, I don't know how many events will be. I'd estimate it for, I think, eight, like ten hours. I think that estimate for the weekend.
It'd obviously be good to have them on reserve as well, okay, so.
Yeah.
And I'll have a drug tested, just so.
What?
I just have to get him drunk.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would make a motion, as long as you've said that the budget can absorb it, the select word budget can absorb that, that cost. I would make a motion that we, you know, authorize. That position up to thirteen thousand two hundred bucks, I'll second that motion.
Can I amend it to say until June thirtieth?
Are we gonna put it in the budget then?
I haven't, we haven't decided.
So this is, um.
I'm not ready to make that decision tonight. I'm not ready to make that decision tonight.
When does it think of?
Yes, my question is why June thirtieth if it's open for winter plowing?
Yeah, it's just through April first, basically.
It should be April.
Whatever.
I would happily amend that motion to have a deadline on March thirty first. When when is your on?
Oh, April is snowy too.
I say we always go around.
Yes. Yeah, starting a little bit later. I did calculate for just several weeks.
Amen by second.
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
You have to keep amending. No, no, he's just saying he's receiving his first motion. He's amending that. And you had a session, so.
Yeah.
Ending on April thirtieth.
You don't want to have an end of.
And then when we, while we discuss everyone's budget, we'll discuss that again.
For the new year.
Because we're not accepting anyone's budgets at this time.
Is that you? Amanda's sitting in a small chair tonight. I notice that you're not that quite tall.
We offered to help him.
Yeah, exactly. You guys, you know, I can just press my chin on the table and pretend I'm here, you know. He's like, no, I don't know, you know, it's.
Coming back to this man real quick, the first thing that comes to my mind, the thing that's inside this. This thing where he could get rid of that material is Kenny Grant's debt. If that stuff is of any value, I'm sure Kenny will take it.
First thing I. If he wouldn't use a fine sand file. I mean, I don't think that's.
You all settled with us then? Y'all vote, did it all, don't know?
No.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Who cares? So y'all have in front of you my budget. Um, this is based on this year. I have to tell you. We're doing fantastic at the transfer station. I cannot fault those guys. I thought they were only over a dollar this last week, but she found another ten dollars, so it's eleven. But I have to say that. Um, they're working good as a unit. I have not had any complaints. I haven't had any complaints from them. And the other thing is, um, to go over the budget, I think we will reach eighty four thousand based on this year of what we're doing. Um, for. Income and you have to, I have to offset it by expense, so. The only thing I increased, um, other than the income. Was the container moving charge is going up to twenty two because we're filling it up fast. Um. I tried to make them use the bulk. Um, you know, as much as possible, uh, but the recycling, you know, I don't want them throwing recycling into the um. Bowl, so recycling, even if it's not completely full, it's gotta go every week. So I bumped that up a little bit and because also I don't know if we might have an increase, um, I have a. A phone call out to Joyce about if they're renegotiating their prices or not. The next thing is I went down on the heating fuel. Um, they're not using as much. I mean, I think they've gotten one load this year so far. I know we're just going into winter, but. Silvio, that's pretty good. Um, the heating repairs, I kept the same because we, you know, we want to have it checked out each year. The labor is the biggest increase because that's, I put three percent raises in there for them. Cause they're doing a good job. Um. I mean, they really don't make that much, but uh also we're paying Basil full time now, so that increases it. Uh, the one thing I did, the payroll expenses went up because the payroll went up. The port-alet, I'm hoping will stay the same and they won't increase. They're pretty expensive now. It's one ninety. The only thing I did change is the rubbish disposal because we are getting more rubbish. One of the things I'm going to um. Try to do is um have a discussion with the guys. I I did have a discussion about recycling and I did have a discussion about. Trash, but the bulk, I think they are, um, how do I say? Undercharging. I mean, one guy was very upset with me one of the weekends I worked there because he's like, well, bulk is practically free. No, it's not. I'm sorry, but you're gonna pay what you're supposed to pay. And he's like, well, rugs are too expensive on the sign. Well, no, that's the that's the price. If you take it anywhere, you're gonna get the price. So, um, I think the rubbish disposal with the bulk. We start, it's gonna be, they charge correctly, we'll make enough on it, but we'll have to haul it more. Let me put it that way. Uh, tires, I'm going down to twenty six hundred because um. Be perfectly honest, we're not getting a whole lot of tires. Since we raised our prices, nobody wants to pay it. And that's fine because it's less hassle on our part.
Yeah, and we're on the road.
You mean, they're gonna fit their whole show.
Yeah. And supplies, we don't need as much supplies. Basically, we do cash register tape and a few other things and stuff. I took out small tools. They don't need any more tools up there. They've got a whole shed full. I mean, they collect stuff that I've never even seen before. And of course, you know, we took out the part time help because it's all in um. Payroll now. So that's pretty much it. That's self explanatory. Pretty sure we'll make over seventy four thousand this year. I'm betting we'll make around eighty four. So I thought I should budget the extra ten based on what I've seen for five years.
So what might be a good idea too maybe um is to have um. Somewhere in there, can we ever save money like um? You know, put money away.
So here's my um philosophy. According to the auditors, which we had in the other day, when I talked to him about the transfer station. They breezed like through that like it was nothing. They were more interested in the town books than the transfer station. But it's basically run as a business.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's.
It's a service to the town, um, and we can make a profit.
Yeah.
So if we do, we can say we can take that money to pay back whatever it took us to do the closing of the landfill. Or we can also make it, give money back to the town for cleanup and all sorts of stuff.
Well, what I was thinking actually was starting to, that we're doing good, we're not. Eat just running.
We got about thirty grand in the bank.
Um, to kind of save it for uh capital improvements.
At the transfer station?
Yeah.
Okay. We could always, uh, if the select board gives me the authority, I can create one and put like five grand in it. To begin with, and then maybe each year we could put five grand in until we start seeing a difference.
You know, who knows, our solar system that runs this cash register micro and stuff, we should really have. Some some money put aside.
Absolutely.
Um.
Cause that solar panel isn't gonna last forever.
Right.
And the heater isn't either, but the other thing is Silvio has been really bugging me for an air conditioner. And I got him another fan from home. I was like, there's two fans, you'll 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 survive, so. No, but I'm just saying, he's like blue, sweating balls and that's. Chad is what he said to me and I said, first off, I don't like that analogy. And second, here's another fan. But I have to say that Basil and him do work well together. They have been. Become quite a team. I don't know if you guys use the transfer station, but. They're two pleasant people, so.
Basil's very good to me when I go up there.
Yeah.
Runs right over, grabs my toe.
He's always asking me, but he can help with the town garbage and I would say, well, I told the town I do a solid.
I'd like to see the road widened.
Well, in that one particular spot, yes.
The whole length.
Well, I know, it is, it is quite hazardous, but as Silvio told me, it slows him down.
Well, it does a whoop de whoo three times, but it's it's a little narrow right now and uh. You meet two trucks, it's fifty.
Yeah, very true. If one squirrel person's gotta stop, it just is. The other thing is, is the gate is, they're very passionate about the gate. I actually give Dylan kudos for coming up with that, the idea of the gate. It saved us money. So. So that's the budget for the transfer station.
You know, money set aside, you can unpower it there.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be amazing?
You get it there.
We figure about seven thousand for pole.
Um.
So you're talking three poles.
Yeah.
They can't stretch it that far?
They said just a pile of extension cords from Stoddard's would be fine. Just one here.
No, Oshel found like, no, I'm not, but I know that.
The board have any other questions for Elena?
You didn't go up on your compost?
I didn't. And the reason why, well, no, I didn't because Kristoff Blackter. Having some major problems, but they haven't increased their pride, price, uh, prices. One of those trucks. Caught on fire and the poor driver was hospitalized, we burned.
Oh, gee.
Yes, apparently compost burns.
Okay, it heats. It's not possible, yeah.
So, and um.
It's working.
If we're, we might be, if we we have more garbage, you know what I'm saying? There's not a whole lot of people that do compost, I've found.
Not room for it.
And they'll bring their five gallon bag, which only costs them a dollar, and they'll bring it after, in a month, one month.
For some of us compost at home too, you know, it's uh. You think we ought to revisit the uh bulk? Prices just to check?
I don't think we should revisit them. I think they should adhere to them. In other words.
That's reasonable because that's the most dangerous.
There and he, he didn't take construction debris, but they had it in the truck. So he didn't charge him for it, but they got distracted by other customers and they dumped it. But they got the license plate number, but I called the sheriff and. He told me I'd have to take him to civil court, but he wouldn't give me a name, so.
Do it. I mean, we all pay, try to pay your, your prices and and that's fair.
They wouldn't give you his name, Elena. We paid them, we should have.
I don't know, the 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 officer said he would get back to me, never. I got the number why George Basil gave it back to me. He said, this is the only the truck. He's he's with the guys. Like, yeah.
So there's no other questions, then let's move on to the town parks.
Yeah.
You have to get up.
I just love it.
So budget, the overall budget at the time right now went up about um three grand. Um, I can tell you why. The assistant town clerk. Um, I gave her a raise. I told her when she started, I'd start her and serve them out, and then the next year I would give her a raise. She worked thirty four hours, whereas Edie only used to work twenty eight, so I thought more hours. Um, the copier supplies, no change. The uh health insurance, we actually went down because we're going to two singles. My son is actually gonna have to get some insurance because he's term twenty six. And Deanna is single. And mileage, no change, no change in notices. Um, office supplies, I went down on that because uh grant money, I would have actually gone down a little bit further. But I don't know about the server. The server has been giving us problems, like today our scanner didn't work at all.
But that's not office supplies.
Well, it is if I have to buy something to boost that server. I don't want it to come out of I T because it's basically, I know everybody uses it here, but we are lost on that. Copier without this, you know, scanability. So mostly my office and Michelle uses it. So the other thing postage, no change. Recording fees, I said, see the salary before and I'll get down there. Telephone, no change. Town clerk, see salary. Training five hundred because Deanna is new and there are a lot of uh bills that pass. Like the new tax law is different um for delinquent taxes. You have to wait a whole year to even. Uh, send them to tax sale from the last date of what they paid. Do what was due. So May two thousand twenty four, I can't, if they didn't pay. Last year's, I can't put them up for tax sale until May two thousand twenty five. So there's a whole new thing and I'm going to have a training webinar coming up. But if stuff like this keeps happening, then we're gonna need more training. Then the treasurer um says see salary and then the town treasurer and. Town treasurer and town clerk. I'd like to combine them. We talked about this when um last year, we'd already set our budget. About me just going to salary. Um. As Michelle says, I practically live here, but at forty hours, um, you know, get paid for that and. And run the offices, we usually do. So that would be uh just a flat sixty thousand. So all the fees that would be collected would come into the town and the town would have. I will have to say that it's not as much as it used to be, but if we go back to having a thriving. Real estate market, then it might come back.
But what are we here today? Any idea?
Eight grand. And we budgeted twenty. Yeah, I know, they're just not selling it. Nobody seems to want to buy in the winter.
Spring, move house in spring.
Each Christmas. Yeah, well, buy somebody a house for Christmas.
It's the arts.
It's all about aesthetics.
Absolutely.
So do you guys have any questions about the budget?
So we will put the, so you're amenable to put that on the morning. Well, voters have to approve giving her salary. Oh, the state statute that she gets a fee.
Yeah, and a lot of towns don't do the fees anymore. I did.
Maybe five.
Yeah, I did a a survey. With my um on the uh. Listener for all the municipal clerks and stuff, and I think I've had three responses saying they still got. I will say, just in conclusion, this isn't the budget, but the auditors were here that that felt everything was good. They came back today because we couldn't scan anything to them. Thank God, she only lives twenty minutes away, one of them, and they did the rest. And they said they will get something to me by the end of December, early January, so we'll know our fund balance. So I want to schedule it like this every year, even though we have to have a single audit next year. Which I found out then a federal auditor will come with them to do that. That's extremely scary. Never seen a federal audit.
If you're willing to know what the dates are, so.
All your minutes together.
Yep. Thank you. He has to be here at eight, so I better take him out.
I want to leave you these. Their keys to uh sixty fourth school street.
Oh, okay.
Asbestos removal of that building, so someone's coming on Friday.
And Tom gave you the post office key? Oh, thank God, I reminded him four times. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Fire department.
Thanks.
We're looking to increase detective gear by four thousand. Another set. And our stipend two thousand. We go from seventy nine thousand nine hundred and fifty to eighty five thousand nine hundred. The uh stipend increase would be for the chief and the assistant chief and treasurer. The uh, stipend increase would be for the chief and the assistant chief and treasurer for uh, administrative duties for our time that we spent on that. And the four thousand for a next, one more set of bunker gears.
As we were saying.
Seeing that, where, where is the bunker gear? What is the? Oh, her second gear.
If I pulled these numbers out of the, the foot system, I tried to make some notes on the fire rate income. And I didn't, I kinda confused myself, so I just quickly added up those numbers that are on my right-hand column. These were, these were numbers that were reimbursed by FEMA from the flood that we had in twenty twenty-three. It comes to forty-two thousand two hundred and six dollars. If you take that number out of the total spent at the bottom, that says one twenty-eight nine fifty-seven, you'll get eighty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, and that was the actual spend. Sorry about that. I, when I looked at this, I thought it's great to me, so I just wanted to explain it.
Well, yeah, I understand that now.
And this is also a snapshot again from our, from the budget from July one, June thirtieth. There are some monies in here that we received from FEMA that were spent, that were just outside of this. It's going to be a wash anyway, but I just, there's like a sixty-five thousand dollar compressor that financed that flood and we're getting, you know, that was fully reimbursed. It's not a nest because it came after the June thirtieth. Try to reference that next time.
So have you been made whole from the flood? Have you gotten money back uh, for all your damage from the flood?
Just missing the uh, the electrician wiring up the uh, compressor.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be part of, that's gonna come after the June thirtieth because they.
But have you done it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, but we did get paid for it. Is that what, is that what you're asking? Yeah, yeah, we got, yeah, we got reimbursed. I'm pretty, really, no, I'm pretty sure, yeah, we didn't reimburse.
Communications, everything came out of FEMA.
I would like to know when you completed that project because I need to let FEMA know.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, like in a day or two, I, I have to do it soon. So I have, we have till like January, I don't know what the date is, January eighteenth say. All the, all flood twenty-three projects need to be done. And I need to fill out a form and say when they were all completed and send it in.
Okay. I think I have that already.
And I wouldn't know. A guesstimate's good enough.
We have it.
Would it be too late since uh, I got next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off? Uh, I didn't mean we're in.
Yeah, maybe, just message me at date. I'm not gonna check on it. Just can make it up.
We'll say in a quiet word out loud again with them.
I don't, you know, you, you have a better idea when the electrician came and finished up or something. Just look on an invoice.
That would be shortly after July, so I'm, yeah, we, we've worked on it.
Thank you. Do you um, have any other questions for the fire department?
I had one other thing not with the budget, so after.
Okay.
Uh, we're looking for commission on the Tammy Westover's property of its person training for chimney fires.
I don't know. Right now we found asbestos in there, having asbestos removed. Probably not a good idea.
Is there any other options like um, what's the other one?
Betty Lou's has a chimney.
You guys want?
She has a chimney in the living area.
But what are you gonna do with the chimney?
Right, yeah, we're not, so.
So ladder practice and uh,
We're not doing a lot of burn or anything. We're just gonna do uh, practice with ladders and um,
Teaching the rookies on how to uh, operate on a chimney fire. So we would ladder the roof and send the brushers up and down.
So we would simulate a chimney fire.
And uh, when do you wanna do this?
Uh, this, Monday nights, um, we have fourteen this week, this uh, month.
So um, I have already put it out on our P for bid and I'm going to um, let me just sign, next Wednesday?
Yeah.
We were gonna award the bid because we know that there's no asbestos in there. We can award the bid now. Um, I, they are required to give ten days' notice before they begin demolition to the EPA or something, so you've got a couple weeks if the rest of the board agrees.
So we could do the, the ninth or the sixteenth?
Mine is a fix into all the other deadlines we were doing, but it's a lot of awful.
Sorry, did you say you may identify? Did you have access to the property by, until what day?
You're talking the ninth and sixteenth?
Yeah, yeah.
So they can't really start until the twenty-first?
And then until.
So that's it, they're done, because then we're gonna start demoing it.
So the fire department can practice between now and the twenty-first?
Twenty-first, sorry, thanks. And what is the property? I missed that.
Four sixty-two School Street.
Well, before we would know answers on the asbestos at Tammy's.
But we already know. There is asbestos in the air. So four sixty-two School Street is open. Um, and somebody's gone and taken everything anyway, so it doesn't much matter. Somebody took the wood stove, I don't know. There's nothing else in there worth everything.
I just know from driving by, there was a chimney there, that's valid. Would we need a key for access or?
No.
Okay.
It, it's open. Somebody broke the, actually someone took the door off. So she took the garage.
Oh, she took, I noticed.
Took the garage door. But when you go.
September, I was going by in September, I'm going.
Somebody took the door to the house off.
Oh, jeez.
I guess to take the wood stove off.
Must have been hell because you gotta go down three steps and they're pretty steep.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. After, we have permission on the, for the two days?
It's December twenty-first, right?
Chin, I'm gonna be calling you to try to get some dates for when the other FEMA projects were completed.
Did he get back here?
I haven't heard from him at all. You don't have them in your journal or something?
Sorry.
Didn't you keep a journal or something, a book or?
Well, I wrote it on my time sheets, but I turned on the time sheets, so it's still there. Action tomorrow, because he told me he was gonna get that done.
Okay.
I'll give him a call for you.
I'd just like to get that thing in before Christmas.
Have we got this final bill?
Uh, I don't, no, I don't, I thought we did.
Is that, is that furry ranch or what? Just pull it out, it's out, straight in.
Thank you. Do I have to shut this door so the cat doesn't get out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was gonna take, do something, make somewhere else. Make some no caper to fix that before it gets, where, give me the screw a little rotten, alright? I'll say that. What's up? I'll say that.
Do we have the listers, bunch of?
Listers, yeah. Tom came in and tried to present it a while ago, but we still have questions about it, so I told him I could done it tonight for him. Um, I have the same and I know it went up eight thousand, but we do have a new uh, lister assistant. And we did, when we hired him, when we hired him, we did say that um, we would, after the three months probation, potentially we could increase him to twenty now, he's eighteen now. So I added that increase. He is in here working twelve hours a week. I don't know that he ever really is going to do that, so that budget is high. His salary is high there. Um, if you look down increased hours for the appraisal year, I increased Tom's hours um, by two hours a week. For twenty-six weeks. And that's why his salary went up a little bit, so that he has the time. What the appraiser said they will need from our staff is um, basically just to help contacting. So it's a lot of mailings, um, just contacting the, the town clerk and letting, letting them know that we're coming out. So, that's gonna be all appointments, all the information, um, paper notifications and all mailings.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Um, do we know what the contract is, the amount of money the contract is for the reappraisal?
Linda has it, I think.
So I would need to know what the contract is and I would need to know um, how much money we have in the appraisal fund?
For a hundred four, I think, something like that. Just talking about money. But I can get that, so the contract um, amount and then the, the.
Because if there's a difference, we'd have to put it in the budget. Because there's, when is this starting? Two thousand and one?
That's the thing, so when we talk to them, it's starting July first, twenty twenty-five. The grand, the, the grand list is, the listers are responsible for the grand list and then twenty-five to twenty-six. Um, I'm sorry, twenty-six to twenty-seven is on the appraisers. That's the notes that I was, I was given.
But they're, all, all I care is they're gonna start working sometime after July.
Yeah.
First, twenty-five.
Through twenty-six. The listers are responsible, but I agree.
So we need money to pay for that reappraisal, which I don't know how much it is because, and we need to know how much money is in the account. And then we need more money, and if it's less, can some of this added lister time come out of that fund?
Okay.
Those are what I wanna know.
Sure.
The number that sticks in my head for the contract, I think it was one eighteen, but that was a very long time ago.
That sounds very earlier, but again, I don't know what is in the account.
Plus, we're gonna be getting um, so it'd be good to know when we get our, what date we get our new appointment. You know, does that come in the spring? You know, we will be getting a payment in twenty-five.
What do we get, like a hundred or, what, what do we get each hundred?
No, we get like nine thousands. We've been saving for years for this.
Yeah, it's been more, two thousand two?
My memory is we were gonna have about one, some, like, we're gonna have, you know,
Yeah, my memory was that with all of the additional payments, between now and when we were gonna have the money going out, we were supposed to be just about even. That's my memory of that.
Go be emailing around? Or just do it on the eighteenth?
And do it on the eighteenth if you wanna. It just helps with the budget, you know, and we need, we need to know, and I don't remember.
That, or that amount coming in, is that actually, should that be, be this in this particular budget?
No, no. It, it's gonna. So we can't, that money is, that's all we can ever use it for. Is a re, is a reappraisal or work on the grand list. So it's just like taking money out of the capital fund or something.
And you can use capital fund for that particular?
No, like, like that, no. Project managers report, that was, you know, sorry, I love a copy of that.
Just reviewing, from one of the slipboard system, administrative system report. Sure. Um, pulling together, still working on two particular grants, uh, the better back road, the better roads had a relief for the culvert replacement on Elmer Pond Road. Um, I met with Alex Jones to uh, to get ready to apply for it. Still kind of um, waiting for Gravel to give us their, their cost to, 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 to do this. Um, and then we're also uh, pulling together the cost of the materials. I think that we'll do this one in-house. Um, I'm actually need to rent a a larger excavator to do it, it's a four-foot pipe. So um, I've been pulling together those costs. Um, the energy efficiency grant that we got to replace these lighting fixtures, which by the way, these are gonna be done on the seventeenth. And um, I contacted them to see if we could carry that over because the board had decided that maybe we would, we would do that next year. If we, we can carry that over and still possibly get the thousand dollars off, um, what we would need to do is just to submit an updated estimate at that time, so we would have to do it, the work in July of twenty-five. Um, we would have to submit an updated estimate if the prices are going up and that may impact the incentives, it can go up or down depending on how the estimates change the, the scope of work. Um, and so they can, what they can do is, we agreed to the proposal, just I can let Emily know tomorrow. And they can just do a simple update on the contract and we would resign and be updated. I mean, if we are committed to, to replacing these, have it in our budget in July, then we might as well use the thousand dollars. Just to let you all know. How much was it again? Sixty-five, I had it here. It's gonna bring us fifty-nine fifty and then a thousand dollars off. Uh, this particular, I've got Marcel, he came in cheaper, Marcel, who would came in cheaper than David Jordan. Um, so it's gonna be about here, replace these two. Rewiring, because David Jordan wanted to totally replace the whole fixture and um, Marcel's like, we're just gonna rewire it, like we're gonna do everyone these. Rewiring the outlets. Um, met with the, Lynn and I met with the labor union rep on Monday. Uh, they're contracting for another three-year contract. We have another meeting scheduled. It'll probably be over hopefully in the next meeting, otherwise we have two meetings. Should know by by December eighteenth. We get that one at five hours. Um, I think I sent this out to you, but just as a reminder, the Woolcut Elementary School generator for Jostin, it's being installed and they're just waiting for the final load test to be performed. Um, things things that will be fully functional within the rest of the weeks. Um. Pursuant to Act one seventy one, municipalities are required to appoint an ethics liaison to serve as a point of contact with the ethics commission, the state commissions. Um, the this ruling states that each municipality acting through its legislative body shall designate an employee as liaison to the state ethics commission. If the municipality does not have any employees, well, uh, so this goes into effect January first of twenty twenty five. I don't know if you all have already appointed a liaison or if you would like to do so. Linda, before you.
I think I'm walking through points. Six or seven pages deep, but I made up.
Any other discussion on appointing Michelle to serve on the NSWOPIT liaison to the ethics committee? Was it favor?
Hi.
So carry.
Um, I just wanted to let you know the town generator has been scheduled for, I was going to say, December ninth. I have not heard yet from her that that's not gonna happen, so hopefully that will be taken place. They're working really hard to get it. They know it's an emergency shelter. Working hard to get it, even if they can't get that scheduled and replaced. Um. As you know, our handyman resigned. And so I'm looking at ways to fill that position temporarily. Um. I know that we've been contracted, so uh, the staff has agreed to the staff, that Indiana and I agreed to do the the just the weekly stuff that we have in the monthly stuff, so we'll handle the fast recycling. Um, handle the fire and station checks. Um, I'll get uh, for me to show me how to do the the water supply project for town hall. And um, I just need someone to check the furnaces more often than the annual inspection, which I will schedule, but I don't know what I'm looking for on furnaces, so.
What is checked? I didn't know you checked them.
I checked them, uh, like nothing.
He didn't know. He didn't check them. There's nothing to check.
Oh.
He didn't. They weren't bringing.
Yeah. What you texted is, can't turn dial when they come on? Hey, they're working.
Look, he's no air cleaner, so.
It's not, there's nothing to check. Sorry.
So we can, we can handle that kind of stuff. Um, I was, I was gonna propose that we just have we have a couple of people we can do our call uh for both scheduled maintenance, which would be uh making care of Jeff Harris for scheduled maintenance, like the nine eleven, the nine one one signs. Um, and I was gonna talk to that soon, but I think we canceled that. And that's unremovable until the shoveling. I've been shoveling around here, but until we can get this person on board. Um. So I think that was just gonna propose for that budget again, we just keep it as is and can contract out that and work. The labor at ten, the um, the maintenance portion, the repair portion of town. And then contract that for specific services that we want. I don't know. It seems like what's wrong with that.
You say though, at some point where it's getting to be too much, you know, that the employees are kind of begrudgingly doing it. Please let us know.
I think it'll be fun. None of this mind can really. Not. Sorry, sorry. So yes, I do. But. Listen, my, oh, I wanted to talk to you about texts like that. Someone sent this to me and said, check it out, so I I sent it to the reception for this texting chat package that we have in front of these. What this is, is a this emergency texting uh service. And they actually get their hands on from the US Postal Service. Um, of our six hundred four households, they will be able to get four hundred twenty one of our local cell numbers. So, and that's, each cell number is the primary household cell number, so that would be four hundred twenty one households of the six hundred four that we could reach automatically. Um. The service would then set everything up on the backend, and it would allow us to set up text messages for emergencies for the dog license renewals. It would allow us to set up um text messages for tax, taxes are due. Um, it's just like a useful, useful service. We can send up to twenty five thousand messages per year. Um, they set everything up. It's 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 a lot of tech support as well, whenever we call. Um, and they have a couple of slip features where you can select on a map particular portion. You're just, you can do floodplain for flooding. You can just send out those messages based on any of the phone numbers we have. They show up as red dots on the map. And you can parse out and select particular areas to traffic for. Like road closures.
I was just gonna ask, when we go to do the culvert on the pond road, or like the North Hooker Road?
Yeah.
We could have theoretically texted to notify for the road closure.
And they can opt in, so they would send out initially uh the four hundred twenty one calls, and people would have to opt in, or they could opt out. Um. They they add a widget on our website for this part of the package, and then the widget, the widget says, hey, do you wanna get calls? When it's there, we can adjust it to say, or you can have us in the hundred. I think we do have some sort of database. I have not found it for our emergencies, because it was added to the website. But I only have received one email, and I don't know who's been collecting these. Kurt doesn't seem to have that database, so that's for not.
When when we turned the website on, I remember that being explained as a place holder, but we didn't have.
It's not actually been collecting the data.
Right. It was a thing that we wanted. Uh, the email list, but it was, it was not something that had been activated. Was my memory of that.
Well, we, I've received one email, and I don't know where, if we've received any more, I don't know where they are, so I'm afraid that information could be lost. Um. So the price of this, I chucked it down, so she dropped the price a lot. They dropped the five hundred dollars, like I said, the um, and so eighteen hundred dollars a year, I know that's pretty high for this kind of service, but I said I would present it. Anyway. She couldn't get it any lower. But it gives us um unlimited, oh, and you can use it for like committees to text back and forth. So if committees can send out texts about meetings and things like that. But I thought I would, you guys could think about it. We would need to get, to get this particular rate normal thing, to get this particular rate left in, we would need to let them know by December thirtieth. And then we would not pay until I do this for years. So we essentially get the service for six months free until it would start. They always start it in uh this full year.
So we have the last one, you know, the, when?
By December thirty.
Oh, December thirty.
So they get it left in before January first, and then we would start to set it up, and we would not begin to pay until July first. You could also, you can also set it up to receive questions, kind of like what the website is doing now, but I think I like the way we have the website set up now. But the library can use this, I mean, any of our departments can use it. And then we get a, an account manager assigned to us, and they will do all the setup with us and do our, our training. So I thought we could come back to this next, um, the next year.
I like the idea. I'm just curious how much we would use that. I mean, road closures are nice, but we don't have that many of them.
And you've got people from other towns too to use our roads.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think it would replace for a front porch for around. Um. It's mainly for emergencies, but is it worth eighteen hundred dollars?
Most of the people that are going, you see a lot of the flooding there, basically on.
Right, and there's, there's always, you know, National Weather Service is always issuing guidelines and things, I don't, it seems it seems kind of, and yeah, that was the point.
Hi, excuse me, could I? I can't figure out how to raise my hand. Yeah, um, this is something that I have been hoping for and thinking is very, very important for a lot of years now. You know, and you may be thinking that that cost is really high, but if you think about the cost of anything else out there, I don't think it's high at all. What is the cost of one life that could be saved? That's all I have to say.
But uh was, um, if you could reach out to other departments and see you know, is this something they could utilize? It could be the fire department, couldn't it? Um. Are there other departments or areas in town that, um, what, maybe, maybe, um, just ask their advice on how whether they think this is something that they could use.
Fire department is connected right into Memorial County, so they get every alert and all the road closures, everything right there.
Well, would they, would that help them when they were going door to door when the river was going up? That's what I think. Or a fire or something. Not, not for them.
But you could get that on the TV up until eleven. But it's.
You go up?
You get that on your TV up until eleven, your alerts, it would be after that time if the cell phone was to go off.
Yeah, I I would still be interested to see what the, you know, what the use cases were. That's a great idea to reach out to other departments, but.
I know the town board would use it for a reminder of trash, because sometimes people are like, you know, I didn't, you know, I didn't drive by and see this, or why didn't you email? Actually, someone just came in the other day. I got an email reminder for my dog and my cats.
Well, and the next time we have a wastewater hole, we could use it for that.
Yeah.
But but no, I mean, to that point, it could be used for that.
Yeah, but you, you know what the time is roughly. And I hate to say it, when it comes to dog fees, registration, over half the boom, don't even. So you gotta keep bugging them.
Yeah.
So it's a big expense, but.
We'll just see, see, and we'll talk about it next time, whether maybe this idea is out there that you're not thinking of.
Okay, I'm done.
You have a question to Michelle? Now we'll move on to the town community forest bridge insurance.
Uh, I sent all of this out. I sent out uh an email um regarding Lucian's findings. He said he visited the bridge on eleven twenty one and generally determined that a replacement value today would be about fifty thousand, fifty to sixty thousand, because the prices of pressure tube would have gone up. Uh, he said the bridge is very well made, it's a crotch-eating pine. Uh, steel beams are supported by concrete blocks on each end. He advises to us to check the condition of the bridge two to three times annually. Um, we put traffic in light vehicular traffic. Um. He, this, he is saying that he thinks it will, it will be, uh, he estimates the bridge to be solid for at least fifteen years with light vehicle, but minimal maintenance costs um annually, he said, but it may be a hundred dollars, although he didn't specify for what.
It's probably like fifty bucks, sixty bucks a gallon.
Now, the insurance are probably letting cover occasional front maintenance vehicles if you want it. That's what I'm remembering, I guess, since the you might open it to vehicular traffic, but a frustrating bridge, going carrying occasionally, not having a way to do that.
Yes, that's what the insurance company said. Did Lucian have an opinion whether we should insure it or not?
Um. Really, he didn't think, he said it's good, he thought it's gonna last for quite a while.
And so we would have insurance just if um it's flooded or liability.
Liability would be different.
Okay.
I think this insurance would cover it would property, so it's property and liability.
It wouldn't cover um just regular maintenance, uh, just, just if it got washed away, basically.
But now, when you're putting up signs up, acid, drum risk. I'm not joking about that. I mean, we've got to throw, throw that in there. It's just, I don't think there's really handrails. Handrails, well, passenger, it was a mansion.
Probably.
Yeah.
Make sure that.
Right, yeah.
The picture.
Yeah.
Whether or not they would meet the state's classifications as handrails along the walkways and all, but. That seemed like it might be a forest committee question if they wanted to install anything that would need an ADA guideline or anything like that. Yeah, I mean, with the replacement cost of fifty thousand, and you know, Gordon was in here, was at last meeting saying that it's super convenient, but it's not really a life-saving bridge. It seems like the kind of thing that we, if we lost it, we could then try and find a way to budget and replace it, the replacement cost being fifty thousand.
Instead of be lost, it would get around in other ways, so.
Yeah. Yeah, in the, in the short term, but I'm thinking in the long term, if we ever wanted that bridge back, should we lose it? You know, the forest committee could do a fundraiser, and they could do I think we could do a grant, swim for a grant. I think we could do a lot of things to try and replace it. I don't know that we need to insure.
What's the cost to be insured?
They wouldn't tell us until they get, we gave them a nine.
Okay. So I can say six, like instead of fifty to sixty thousand. Fifty five?
So is that something we should investigate further or just forget it? I think we're covered anyway. Aren't we? We're covered, we're just covered.
Yeah.
There's anything in town is liable.
Let's see what the cost is gonna be.
I can see it's cheap enough for the placement.
I can see it's cheap enough for the placement, fifty, sixty.
Okay, I will check, I will give her that value and see where two things would be the cost. If they have that to you.
Um, did everyone have a chance to look at the purchasing policy, their revisions are complete? No, so I think we wanna, if you want to adopt it, then I have it, you sign it.
You already motioned to adopt that last time, did we?
No, we said revision.
Okay.
I thought we had voted pending those revisions, meaning once the revisions were complete, we were.
Just make the motion again. I will have to make a motion to accept the revised, revised purchasing policy, even if we are doing so for a second time. You sit first or second?
I'll be, uh, I'll be the second, why don't you be the first, you know?
I make that motion.
Doesn't work, you can be fine.
Um, and it's gonna be, it's dated December fourth.
Any further discussions? Was in favor of adopting the revised purchasing policy? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So carry.
And probably a moot point at this point, but do we have to remove the previous, not, what do we call that? Oh, we know, we amended it, never mind, we've already.
Uh, it just says replacing, so it's, it's contractable and then you guys can sign it.
And it will need to be uploaded and then went to the website, well, uh.
And then to the recorded, I think we said.
Yeah, it should be recorded in the town meeting book and, in those two books. We already kind of talked about the handyman position, do you want to talk in the following?
I'm sorry, I jumped right down on that one, so you have.
So we can just move to updates, I guess.
Do you want to talk about the project manager, Robert? Oh, we already talked about that, right?
The school street bridge. Okay, what happened, my math, that's over there, yeah, they told me that I should contact the lines.
Yeah.
Contact him.
Never mind. He had any interest? I don't really have anything new, um, the schoolhouse has been meeting quite frequently. Uh, moving forward in times here, they've been creating their, their village trust and working with a preservation trust in Vermont. To get everything together. That project, but it's, uh, just catching up on FEMA stuff, buyout stuff.
About the Jack Will Do property.
Get that, and we do, yeah, now beyond the warning. It's not much else to do, unless you have an idea.
I didn't know if we wanted to try to set up a mini. Boarding.
To, um, refresh my memory.
Put it in the main, put it in the main trust, you would like a committee right to town forest.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I don't know if we, we're trying to get that set up.
I have, I have all the requirements I can set if somebody wants to be on the committee.
Take a lot of them, no, not a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Is this for the bear swamp?
Yeah.
That's right, okay.
So I have a folder, a folder has, um, what we, what, what the requirements are. I can get to you. Why don't you put that on the agenda next, for next meeting and you can bring in some names for, for that, and we'll set up a committee. It might be really good, um, it's starting a little bit of outreach so that, um, people know what's going on.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
For a town meeting.
That'd be nice to put that on the front.
That's why I, um, wanted to have that little walk, to get people interested in learning more about what was going on, so they didn't go to town meeting and just go. Other than that, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion, then we adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-six. PM. I'll second.
Thank you. Okay.
Name.
You can say the one, which will only. Go to the chat this year, get turned.